Okay, I would like to call the April 15th meeting of the Carver Board a Select Board Back to Order. The time is now 6:33. This meeting is being recorded by Area 58 Community Access Media Channel 9 and we post it by Area 58 on YouTube as soon as possible. There are openings on civil committees. Please refer to the front page of our website for a listing and application. Would you all mind please standing for the Pudge Legions?
Pudge Legions to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God in the business of justice for all.
Community prayer. Almighty God, humbly we pray your blessing as we concern our life with the opportunity to serve our community. Enhance us with your spirit of dignity and selflessness. May we become instruments of support and understanding as we seek to bring an environment of trust and purpose among all who provide the many services that make us all that we can become. Help us achieve the goals of our commitment to this office. That is now our responsibility. And especially we lift our prayers for all the citizens of our community that we have been allowed to serve, that they may discover the fullness and joy of life that we all seek. And keep those serving in our armed forces and our first responders in our hearts and thoughts. Amen. All right. First item on the agenda, citizens' participation. Would anyone like to come up to the mic and address the Select Board? Seeing none. I just want to make a notification in case people are here for these items on the agenda for tonight. There've been two items that are being rescheduled. One is the request to use Shertlift Park Recreation Committee on June 19th and the 28th to a later Select Board meeting, as well as a scheduling conflict with the owners of Ediville to present an update on the plans for their site that will be moved to another date. All right. Next item, 6:35, the Boston Post cane dedicated to the oldest living resident who returned their census. Unfortunately, we have some bad news. The person Helen Whitaker has unfortunately passed away. I'd like to express our thoughts and prayers of condolences to her family. Would I guess, would the board mind, I guess, taking the vote to provide this cane to her family for a period of time? Does that make sense?
Make that motion.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Any questions, issues of concern? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, zero. All right. We have requests for appointment for Carver Cultural Council. We have three people, Martha Cobb Kelly, Brenda Korch, and James Philip. Who's here to attend? Would you mind coming up and giving us your name and address the board?
Hi, my name is Brenda Korch.
Have a seat. Brenda, we do have your application. Would you mind just giving the board a little bit about your background and what's drawing you to the Cultural Council for the people at home?
Yes. I grew up here in Carver since the fourth grade. I moved away.
Excuse me for a second. Is that my phone? I'm not sure.
It's green.
Turn the mic a little bit and speak into it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I grew up here in Carver, starting in the fourth grade, graduated from Carver High, moved away for college, moved back and forth many times. I just recently relocated back with my husband and my son. We bought the house I grew up in. So Carver has a big place in my heart and the Cultural Committee, I think, can do a lot for kids, elders, there's a lot. Part of a book club at the library and one of the women there kind of share what the Cultural Committee does and it's definitely something I'm interested in. I'm also a social worker, so diversifying and adding programs is a big thing for me.
Okay, well, thank you for applying. Does the board have any questions?
No, I'd just like to thank you for stepping up. Appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you for applying.
Definitely, thank you.
Thank you.
I think there's someone in here who wasn't here when you asked, said the names.
Oh, is there anyone else here for the Carver Cultural? I can't say this, Carver Cultural Council appointments?
Oops.
No.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Are there three openings?
Yes, there are, Ms. Chairman.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion that we appoint Martha Cobb Kelly, Brenda Korch, and James Philip to the Carver Cultural Council.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Any other questions, issues of concern? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, zero. Congratulations and thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next item, a request for appointment for the Board of Registitors, Jeffrey Boland, Jim Hildebrandt.
That's John.
Oh, sorry, John Hildebrandt and Mary Ann Spencer for three-year terms expiring June 30th, 2028. And would any, I guess, anyone like to come up? Please give your name.
Hi, I'm John Hildebrandt. I've lived in Carver for 26 years, moved here from St. Louis, raised both my daughters. They went all the way from multi-age pre-K through graduating at Carver High School. And I understood there to be a need for Democrat representation for the registrars and volunteers.
Great, thank you for volunteering. Are there any questions from the board members?
No, just thank you for stepping up. Appreciate it.
Okay, so if I think this is, we have three.
Yeah, I think Mary Ann Spencer.
Oh, Mary Ann, where is Mary Ann? Oh, there she is. I'm sorry. Thank you, sir.
Thanks, yeah.
Anyone like to come up and?
We used to be neighbors. Hi, good to see you.
Just your name and address, please.
Mary Ann Spencer, 1 Godfrey Circle, Carver. I've lived in Carver for almost, I think it's been 39 years now. I have a deep love for Carver and I would like to help out any way I can. I'm not on any other boards, but I would like to help with this as much as I can.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for stepping up.
Any questions to the board?
No, just thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, how many openings are there?
I think they have three participants and two openings.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion that we appoint John Hildebrandt and Mary Ann Spencer to the Board of Registitors.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, zero. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
The acceptance of a donation from Clearway Energy to the Carver Fire Department in the amount of $5,000 to the Carver Fire Department gift account. Chief?
Thank you, welcome everybody. We'll take a couple of seconds of your time. So we were approached by Clearway Energy. They're the operators of four solar sites within the town. We've had good partners with them, with public safety to work with. They have no violations, no enforcement actions. They currently have no current or proposed projects under review or coming through that we know about. And they have offered, presented us with a possible $5,000 donation. Would ask you if you could accept that. It's not uncommon that we get donations throughout businesses in town. That's happened many times for different amounts. We always just make sure it's ethical and a pub public. And there was nothing really that said this wasn't. And would ask your support, and then if we got your support, then we'll re-talk to this company with the official donation.
I move that we approve the donation from Clearway Energy to the Fire Department of $5,000.
We have, we have a motion.
Second.
We have a second. Any other questions, issues of concern? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Chief. Next item, the approval of the civil fingerprinting regulation policy. I guess I'm going to defer this to Ms. Chairman.
Are we still waiting for the police chief?
We're waiting for the chief. Joe's on his way.
Can we delay this for a moment?
Sure.
Is Ediville here?
Ediville's not here, no.
They're rescheduling.
Oh.
Okay. What time is it? We've got 7:40. I guess why don't we probably go into the discussion on the vote? I guess that these are two.
We're waiting for Mr. Clifford to show up too.
Okay, that's right, Joe. All right, I see Joe coming along. Or I might as well jump into the, you're late. Sorry, Joey, to move you up.
To the agenda.
We're going along fast.
For the record, I'm Joe Roach. I am one hour early. All right. So I'm not sure if you guys have any questions, but just sort of a summary. At town meeting, town meeting approved the four pilots that were put forward. The Board of Assessors just signed, you know, now they're executed by the assessors, the Select Board, and the Town Manager and Council. So the assessors just met, signed them. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them for you tonight, but really it's just sort of an execution.
Does the board have any questions?
No, I don't.
Okay, I guess I just have some on, where does this fall now? This is the renegotiation of the, I guess, tell me if I'm wrong, when they were solar contracts, they were in raise and appropriate, but now they're pilots. So do they move down to?
Correct, so, so there's, there were four pilots. One of them was a renegotiation. So originally back in the day, that was picked up in the levy. Now it's a local receipt. The three brand-new ones, new projects actually under, you know, that were just constructed, those have never been picked up as new growth. They're just local receipts, page three of the recap. So one of them's sort of in there in both ways, like, like the old ones were.
Okay. And ballpark, I mean, I don't remember the numbers in total, Joe, with the total of the four contracts.
So for the four of them together this year, it was 178, 366. Over the life of the four of them, it's $4,027,181.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Chairman, I just have a question. So what kind of vote are you looking for, Mr. Roach?
I'm not sure if you need to take a vote amongst yourself to sign them. You know, I really guess just, really just looking for your signature on, on all the hard copies.
Because we would have voted to approve this at a town meeting.
Correct.
Yes, yes, it passed.
Exactly.
You should take a vote to sign.
Yeah, I move that we.
It's a formality.
Sign the four agreements, the four pilot agreements brought to us by our assessor.
Second.
We have a motion and we have a second. All those, any other questions, issues of concern? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I've been told that the police chief is unable to join us this afternoon, this evening. Do we want to go back to the civil fingerprinting and policy of the board? I could speak to it if the board has more questions, we may have to delay it, but I could at least speak to it.
Let's go back.
So this is, this is a policy, the town needs to put together certain regulations as it relates to licenses for certain occupations that come into town, and they are listed here in number two, applicable licenses. It's hawkers and peddlers for door-to-door salespeople, livery deliveries, ice cream truck and other mobile food vendors. So to be able to get their license application, they actually have to be fingerprinted and we need to have a policy on that fingerprinting. So it's not a criminal offense, it's literally for a license, but it is something we have to have in place to make sure we're treating all applicants the same and fairly.
So, Mr. Chairman.
Sure.
I just want to point out that I think, my memory serves me, the police chief did speak to us about this. This was some time ago, maybe even a couple of years ago?
I think we've done it on a pretty regular basis. I don't know if it's annual, but I seem to remember.
Okay, maybe, maybe so, yeah.
Mr. Doug.
Just a question for you, to the town administrator. Has the, has the police chief approved this? This has been reviewed and approved by the?
Yes, this has been reviewed by the Police Chief and Town Council.
Okay.
So, and I started going through, but this is, this is, this is not a new policy, right? This is just?
No, he's come to us before, yeah.
Do we know what was changed?
No.
I do have on my copy on the policy statement, I see a different colored font, the last sentence, and then there's a second paragraph added there. That's about all I really see, Mr. Chairman. There isn't much change to it that I see.
And the police chief approved it?
Is it a?
I'm sorry, number, on page six, number 10, is handling of fingerprint-based state and national criminal history information. So that's a, that's a new paragraph.
Is it substantive or just?
Certainly number 10 is.
Okay.
You know, number, number one is just the policy statement.
Should we hear number 10? Is that something we should hear, Mr. Chairman?
Well, he's approved it, he being the police chief, has, right?
Correct, I'm happy to read it to you.
Sure.
Fingerprint-based state and national criminal history record information will only be handled and reviewed by authorized personnel in a secure area out of view of the public and of all other unauthorized individuals. So again, it's just to protect their privacy, is what I'm saying.
I think that's reasonable. I would make a motion to approve the civil fingerprinting regulations policy.
I'll second that.
We have a motion, a second. Any other questions, issues of concern? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, zero.
Mr. Clifford does say he'll be here in 10 minutes.
Okay.
And that's?
A couple of appointments, we got a 7:45 and a 7:50 appointment, we could do those.
I guess they don't have to be here for it, right?
No, I don't think so.
Is the council meeting, Cultural Council meeting?
No.
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 The what meeting?
Cultural Council.
Oh, maybe she was here to be appointed.
I think she.
Are you, are you here for the appointment to the Cultural Council?
Yes.
Martha, congratulations, I've got good news for her. You were appointed.
You were appointed.
Where is, should I leave now?
You can stay as long as you like.
I have to stay here and just to find where. Sorry. Oh, there's.
No, no worries.
I had a meeting at the American Legion, I couldn't be here probably.
No worries.
It's okay.
Congratulations on your appointment, and you'll get a letter from the town clerk and then you'll go get sworn in.
You don't need to stay.
You don't need to stay.
Did you say?
No, this is a Select Board meeting. You need to find out when the next meeting of the.
Please.
Don't, don't forget to get.
You get to go home.
Don't forget to get sworn in by the town clerk.
Good point, good point.
As soon as you get a letter, you'll get a letter from her and then you can come in and get sworn in.
Right, and she's on the first floor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's a good point.
All right. We'll go with the 7:45, the Serpent Commission Member Appointment. Maybe I can make a motion to nominate, I guess, Thomas Bott for the term of May 31st, 2025 to June 1st, 2026.
So moved.
Nope.
We have a motion and we have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, zero. Let's see, next item, we've an appointment of the, appointment of the Select Board's representative to the Old Colony Elder Services Committee, Connie Kelly, for the term of July 1st, 2025 to June 30th, 2026.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, zero. I guess, so we'll go with the opera update, Elaine?
All right, we have exciting updates. The municipal well corrosion project is 98% complete. They are just waiting for the DEP to inspect and then the retainage will be paid. And that is Plymouth County funding.
Okay.
For the decommissioning of 22 private wells, three additional wells have been decommissioned since I gave you the update yesterday. An invoice just came in from the contractor who updated us, so that is moving along, I guess better than we thought. It has been a problem, and I think you talked to Kevin and Lee, you're going to talk to Legal?
Yeah, because, Mr. Chairman. So we are having discussions with Town Council about moving some of the other wells forward and getting the homeowners to comply, and also having a discussion with DEP about the same issue, ways we can move that along to make it happen a little faster.
So do we only have 10 of the 22 wells?
Yeah, so I also want to point out on this calculation that not every well costs the same to decommission. It depends on the depth of the well. So when you see an invoice, it may have different amounts for each property on there. So it's not going to come out, it's not 12,400 divided by 22.
Okay. So I guess I should have asked a question before, but when we're decommissioning private wells, does that mean they're going on to North Carver Water?
So they are already on North Carver Water, and they're just trying to make it so they can't use their well because it's not safe. So even if they're using it for, I don't know, watering their grass or gardening or something like that, I don't think they want them to use the well.
Got it.
Before we, before we move on to the federal money, on the Plymouth County money, I know that there was something that came out from the county a little while ago about the fact they might have some money, some extra money, and they were requesting towns to put in projects up to, I think, another 10% or something. Did we put in any projects for that?
We did, and then they said that they weren't going to be doing that.
Oh, okay.
From what I understand.
Just so you know, Ms. Dunn, that happened sometime, some time ago. I'll, I'll reach back out to Tom O'Brien to see, I believe there's been a recent discovery of some funds.
Yeah, they mentioned that at last week at their, at their meeting, and that's why, I think you were at a similar meeting.
This is very recent, yeah.
That's why I wrote it off.
Yeah, it's very recent.
So moving on to the federal funding, we have the Carver Middle High School Mechanical System for Better Air Quality. We knew they were still going to be working on that through April vacation and hopefully completing it by the end of April. So that should be wrapping up very soon with April Vacation Week next week. The Council on Aging Deck, this is where it gets exciting. The deck is framed. It is 65% complete. The weather has not been cooperating. This is why it's taking a little bit longer. So they are getting there. The furnishings are ordered and delivered, they're in storage, ready to go for whenever the deck is complete. There was an issue, and I think we had this update last time, where they had done some work and the building inspector came and had them redo some stuff, so that also caused a little bit of a delay. The generator for the town hall, again, this is very exciting. This has been back-ordered for some time now, and it should be coming into the country, and I believe this week it gets to the Midwest. So Dave was able to get that confirmation from FM Generator that this week it should be arriving in the Midwest, so we're hoping we'll have it by the beginning of May, installed by the end of May. So we're getting there.
Didn't he tell us it was on a truck? With this stop.
Yeah, it's going to go to the Midwest this week. The purchase of the UTV, again, we knew this is probably not going to arrive until June, that's what the original contract had said. So we did get an email that I believe that it's starting to be built, which is good news, but again, there's really no update other than that, that we're still waiting for it. So we're getting there.
Got it.
That's it. That's the thing.
Thank you.
Great. All righty, I guess town administrator update?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. One thing I do want to report to, I had a chance to read to the elementary schools at the Carver Elementary School, if you ever get a chance to do this, I actually have them back in March, but very rewarding. I thought it was quite eye-opening to see the children and ask their questions, you know. I read a book to them, I don't know, maybe it took 10 minutes to read the book. I must have sat there for 15 minutes answering questions, the teacher had to cut them off, they were so, so enthusiastic about it. I know also with a number of the Select Board members, I attended recruitment graduation class over the Fire Department. I believe there were five, five new volunteer firefighters coming, it was the first time I witnessed that. I thought that was very impressive, the amount of training they have to go through, the dedication that they have. I thought that was a great event to, to attend. It is also National Public Safety Telecommunications Week. These are our town dispatches, both the Fire Department and the Police Department. You know, if you've ever been on a 911 call, either end of it, you know, that's, the first person you contact is that dispatcher. They really will help you walk through the process, you know, for usually very tragic situations, calm and voice the other end of that phone is very reassuring, so it's nice to see them get some recognition for the hard work that they do. Elaine did talk a little bit about the deck. I also know that there's construction going on right now at the pickleball court, I believe today, and it must be at midnight, was a deadline for the box turtles to start their migrations for mating season, so they're trying to get as much work done today as possible. I do not believe that they will complete all the work they need to do in the pickleball court, so they will have to put up some of that, I think it was just silt fencing, but they'll have to put the fencing back in, it'll restrict how they access the site. A lot of the work is done, but I know that like the top coat is still not on there. So there's still some significant work to do over there. Mr. Townsend, I believe, alluded to this. The Fire Department did receive a grant from the state, I can't remember which department this actually came from, sorry about that, from the State Fire Marshal's Office. They were looking to purchase a new gear dryer, you know, very, very important, multiple calls, and I know they, they go on many calls in their day. Sometimes when they come off of these calls, they're covered in soot, they want that equipment, you know, washed and dried as fast as possible, so that'd be a great thing for them to have. You might get a chance to hear about this a little bit. The feasibility study that was passed at town meeting last year is underway. The consultant is reaching out to both the COA and the Emergency Medical Services Departments to talk about their needs and what they're looking for on a site. If you remember, we actually had to split the contract. We have a separate engineering firm looking at the old fire police station. You know, we're going to, at some point, we're going to have to join those together and marry them. But right now, they are reaching out to both the COA and the Emergency Emergency Management Services to, to understand their, their needs. One thing that a couple of the Select Board members have asked me about is maybe having a briefing on how town meeting went and particularly going through the articles and the article reviews. I had a chance to talk over with the Chair. I will submit to each member, I'll, I do it individually, a schedule of things for next year. I think one thing that we didn't have this year and I'll probably put in for next year is to have, kind of work backwards from town meeting, you know, there's a, there's a posting date, it's an advertising date, back up to the meeting, the Select Board meeting before we have to post it, to have a final draft of the warrant. I know we did it by individual articles this time, and, you know, we voted each article, but just to see that whole warrant come together one last time, give one last look before, you know, we post it. And then, again, we'll, we'll back up that schedule and give us a little bit more time for next year. Probably put a hard date on there for, for the dedication of articles. I did also attend a Old Colony Technical School meeting today. It was an informational meeting, myself, town clerks were there, finance directors were there also. They talked primarily about the schedule, and I do want to just kind of tell the board about this a little bit, oh, I'm sorry, they, they do have a website there, a lot of information on the website, so for residents to be able to take it there at their website. They have, I believe, every one of their meetings up there, they have a schedule up there. If you can scroll up, I think there's even Tax Impact Calculator. I think this is always the big question, and then you see it says it's coming in August I think this is always the big question, and then you see it says it's coming in August 2025. So they won't have a number for the towns until August 2025. Now, if you look at their schedule now, they're looking at a district-wide vote on November 18th. If we start backing that up, the town clerk needs about 35 days to put that vote together. That puts him into mid-October. So somewhere between August 2025 and mid-October. It only gives us a few meetings, actually, to have that discussion. So again, these are going to be very critical. I would think probably, you know, at least both meetings in September and probably the first meeting in October for the board to have these discussions. You know, the Old Colony staff are more than willing to come to any meeting you want them to attend. But I just do want the board just to be aware, we're going to play that kind of short, critical window to talk about this a little bit. And that's the last thing I have. And again, I encourage all residents to go on the website, take a look at it. It's very informative, a lot of information on there, but more to come on that. And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. All right, we'll go back to, let's see, the discussions on, I'm not sure if these are combined into one or why they're separate. I forget now. Discussion on possible vote to approve the select board policy access to personnel records. I believe we have Attorney Clifford here to, I'll give you a little background. If you remember correctly, about a year or so ago, we talked about access to records, and we had two extremes. We had a board member that wanted access to records when required and one that thought the TA should, you know, manage the staff and the select board doesn't need to see those records for valid reasons. So I think Attorney Clifford's come up with almost like a hybrid approach as to put in safeguards with regards to how possible access could happen in the future. Am I getting it close?
Absolutely. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Good to see you again. The question was posed to me if we could come up with a policy that would really outline, you know, under what circumstances and how the board might have access to personnel records. And there's a few concerns that I tried to address in the policy. First and foremost, these are employee personnel records, and while they're public records, they're not subject to disclosure with a few exceptions. So employees' personnel files are supposed to be confidential. And that's one of the important things we try to do is protect the confidentiality of those records and recognize that there are privacy rights for the employees involved. And the way I've structured the draft policy is to try to also make sure that there's never any accusation against a member of the board who wants to review public records that you've improperly disclosed them. So basically, what we've set up is the criteria by which the board can generally go, you know, under what circumstances might the board want to look at personnel records. And certainly, there are issues that come before this board, hiring decisions, disciplinary decisions, possibly grievances, where it's appropriate for you to see those records. But what I've recommended is that the files be kept in a secure location. You're able to review them, you know, when your schedule permits. But it prohibits copying or electronic transmission of the records, again, so that you can't be accused of improperly disseminating somebody's personnel record. So it sets up a procedure under which a board member can request the opportunity to review the records. The records would be pulled out, made available for the board member, how the board member would review those records. And again, the goal is really just to make sure that there's, we protect the privacy rights of employees and that we protect the board from somebody saying that you improperly disclosed something. So that's really what we've done. This is a question that comes up in many communities, under what circumstances. So it's not a question of, you know, something that's unique to Carver. But I'm happy to answer any questions about the draft policy.
Sure. Any questions from the board? Ms. Hewens?
So I'm probably the one you were referring to who is completely against this, having access to personnel records. I understand they're public, but they're also private, and that's a guarantee. That's something that we, that's a contract we make with our employees when they're first hired. And personally, I don't see any reason why we, as an elected board, should look at personnel records. We have a staff. We have a town administrator who takes care of personnel issues. We have an HR person who seconds our town administrator. And I don't think that having us look at them in a secure location is any guarantee that it won't get disseminated because people have mouths and they talk. So they may not be able to copy it, so on and so forth, but you can't guarantee it won't be disseminated. And that's not your fault. It's just the people are human beings. I just don't see any need for it. If someone can convince me there's a pressing need for an elected board to look at the records of personnel, I just think it's a terrible violation of privacy rights. That's just my take on it.
Great. Any other comments from the board?
Actually, more of a question. So I reviewed this policy, and I think you've done a pretty good job of covering a lot of the bases here. I tell you, you went into great detail. The one question I had is if a select board, if a select board member was going to review these records, it would probably be in reference to something that was happening in this room for one reason or another. And what concerns me is, and that, what they review could come up in discussion in this room. What keeps that information from being released somewhere in meeting minutes? Because that was my concern, that you could somehow have something that was in an employee file that got discussed in this room and became part of the minutes that subsequently got released.
I think, you know, we've put some guardrails in here, but I think, you know, the general principle is that, you know, people who are elected to this board understand their responsibilities and they, you folks are privy to a lot of confidential information that you don't disclose just in the course of your normal business. So, I mean, I would hope that, you know, a personnel issue wouldn't be brought into public domain without proper notice, justification for it to be discussed. Those are the kinds of things that, I don't want to say, you know, people in my line of work rely on, but, you know, those are the kinds of things that give us work when people do that. But I think this really does set up some parameters, but I think it always goes back to really, you know, the boards, your individual understanding and protection of the employee rights.
So just, Mr. Chairman, if I could follow up. So in your opinion, there's nothing we could add to this to somehow, I don't know how you could do it, but somehow would we keep things like that from being released? I don't know. There's no way to permanently seal minutes, I guess, or something like that. But that's my concern, that somehow or other, something gets released in meeting minutes that just shouldn't be out there.
It's not even, I'm not sure that it's always going to be the case that whatever you ask to see as individual members of the board and personnel records would actually come before the board and be discussed in a meeting. So if it is discussed in a meeting, you know, I think the town administrator, you know, if we're involved, we're always really trying to be careful that it's done in the proper context of the open meeting law and that the minutes are approved and redacted if necessary, so that we try to protect it if there is something that is brought up in a meeting. But I think that's really the best we can do. But I think, you know, generally, in my experience, board members understand their responsibilities with regard to confidentiality and really trying to protect employee rights.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Ms. Hewens?
Thank you. And I have a lot of respect for your faith in elected board members, but I have actually been on the board when we, and not, it wasn't any member of this particular board, when we've had board members talk about confidential things that they weren't supposed to. Just to reiterate, we're all human, and I just think that allowing any board access to personnel records is just wrong. And it breaks the contract that we had with them, with the employees when they were hired. I just don't, and I think, you know, you've done a great job, but there's only so much we can do, and we're putting a lot of trust in future board members as well, who, we have no idea who that will be. I would prefer, myself, I think it would be a better policy to leave that in the hands of the town administrator who takes care of personnel issues for us. We're currently only involved in something like that when we have to take some sort of final vote anyway. And I thoroughly trust our town administrator to let us know what we need to know and nothing else.
Okay. Mr. Toffin, any comments?
But just want to add on to what Sarah just said. I think that's part of the reason that we were asked about to see the records was that if something, issue did come up, we would know about it ahead of time, so we could have the opportunity to look at it. And again, these are few and far between, but...
But I don't, I think the town administrator, if I may, I think the town administrator would let us know. He's not going to spring something on us at a meeting that we don't know prior to a meeting. We all have hours that we go and speak with him, and I can't imagine him springing something wild on us at a meeting that we... I hear what you're saying, and I understand what you're saying, but I think that's way less likely than some board member in the future not being as responsible as perhaps this board is.
Right. My comments are just that I think that this is not a workaround the town administrator or HR. There are controls in place here that someone can't just go in and start poking through files without getting authorization from, as I read this, the chair, even the chair can't without approval from the vice chair. So everything has to be transparent, disclosed. I think this should be something on the unusual event where something has transpired, where the board is concerned about a situation, and perhaps not this town administrator, but a future town administrator has not provided either the full explanation that they want or there's still questions. So this just gives an avenue, as though, you know, I can't give you the instance when it might be used, but it's just out there as a path that's safe and secure. But I want to go back to Mr. Townsend's questions for a second. So let's just say the, let's just say there's a contract that comes up for an employee, and the town administrator sits down and wants to, you know, you know, just talk about the employee's performance. That's all good, and maybe somebody has a negative comment for some reason. Would that go into the minutes as you had discussed? And if it did, is that something where it could be not released for the general public?
I'm not defending the open meeting law in any way. It's just another poorly conceived idea from our legislature. But under the open meeting law, you can't talk about performance of an employee in executive session. That is by definition, open session. If you, if something came up in an executive session where we were going to talk about a complaint or allegations against an employee, then we have to have given that employee notice to be there for that discussion. So there's a lot of guardrails, a lot of limitations on how you discuss personnel in executive session. I think to the degree that you're getting into a disciplinary situation and a grievance context, we would want to redact the meeting minutes for anything that was really not particularly germane to the issue at hand. So, you know, prior discipline, that kind of thing should be redacted from the minutes. But it's, I mean, I think these are hard hypotheticals to deal with.
Sure.
But I think, you know, there's so many limitations on how you discuss people under the open meeting law. It's really, those are the controls that I think protect those kinds of situations or address those situations.
Thank you.
So if I'm, so I'm curious, I mean, if there's so many... So I just, I still don't understand why the members of the board might want to look at personnel records. I just, I think we've been through some personnel matters together, and I think we were able to get a full enough understanding. Maybe I'm mistaken. Maybe someone felt they didn't have a full understanding. I just don't see what's to be gained by it, other than the employee feeling like they don't have that privacy anymore.
Okay, fair comment, but again, this, from my standpoint, this is on the unusual case where, again, either a future board, future town administrator, there's an issue that the board is, wants further clarification on, is just isn't happy with the explanations given by the town administrator. Again, it shouldn't be something that, you know, happens on a frequent basis. It has to follow the traditional route. Town administrator handles all discipline and handles all the, you know, personnel issues. It would only be unusual situation where a board just feels that that information isn't sufficient and wants to have the ability to turn around and ask certain questions, to see certain information. That's just the way I look at it. Any other questions? Seeing none, I guess all those in favor of this revised policy, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed?
No.
Motion in a second?
There was no motion.
Oh, I'm sorry. Would anyone like to make a motion to approve this policy?
So moved.
Sorry. We have a motion. We have a motion in a second. We have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed?
No.
Three to one. Thank you so much.
Good to see you all.
Thank you, Mr. Clifford.
Thanks, Jim. All right. Do we have, I've kind of got my sheets all mixed up here, so do we have, I think I'm going to go to the...
Yeah, they're the same.
Same. I think they're the same. I'd rather not. Do we need a second vote?
I think we probably need a vote.
So now that you've voted to approve that policy, a change needs to be made in the Personnel Code under Section 25-5, release of information.
So, Mr. Chair, before we do that through you, I'd like to ask the town administrator, doesn't this need to be negotiated with the unions, a change in the Personnel Code?
Nope.
I think that that's something we should find out.
I can tell you, he did not advise us of that.
No, we just lost him. Come back. Good question.
It's an excellent question and material.
And I guess while we're waiting, we'll skip that one. Anybody want to handle the request to use Shertlift Park? Anybody make a motion to approve the request to use Shertlift Park?
Good question.
Captain Pell, Priest School, May 30th, 2025, from 9:30 to 1:00 p.m.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions, issues, concerns, seeing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Zero. No tomics. I think, did I miss anything?
We still have that 740 item, but I think we need to revise.
Welcome back.
Didn't get too far.
So we have a second item on the agenda, which was the discussion and possible vote on updating Section 25, 5.5 Personnel Code, access to records. And Ms. Hewens just brought up an interesting point. Do any of these things have to be dealt with in union negotiations?
No. I would say no. There's no impact on this whatsoever.
No discussion with the unions, no negotiations? This is Personnel Code.
Under Chapter 150, you are the employer, so the employer would have access. This is not giving somebody outside of the realm of the actual statutory employer access to the records. So I would take the position that no, there is no bargaining obligation for this particular issue.
Mr. Chairman just threw you, so by voting to update Section 25-5 of the Personnel Code, access to records, that's not, we don't need to negotiate that. We can just do that.
That's correct.
Great. Thank you for coming back.
Thanks.
Would anyone like to make a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve the, I'm sorry, approve to update Section 25-5 of the Personnel Code, access to records.
I'll second it.
We have a motion, and we have a second. Any other questions, issues, or concerns? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed?
No.
All right. Let's see. Approval of minutes for March 11th, 2025.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Okay, I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Any comments on the minutes? Changes, seeing none? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Zero. I'm sorry. One extension. Okay. I think I got everything. Select Board announcements, Ms. Hewens?
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, I just wanted to congratulate our new fire department recruits. Actually, I guess they're now new firefighters officially. It was a great ceremony and great teamwork the whole thing involved. Second is that I just wanted to thank the Carver Schools for inviting us to their reading day. It was fun. We had a, and the kids did ask a lot of questions for relatively straightforward book, so it was great. Thank you.
Great. Ms. Toffin? Mr. Townsend?
A couple of things. I want to join Ms. Hewens and I think the rest of the board in congratulating our new firefighters, and I'll just read them their names for the folks at home. Sean Levens.
Sean Lovins, Connor Wood, Douglas Smith, Mark Butler, and Sean McAvoy. And then, last week, I attended a Plymouth County Leadership Meeting. This is a meeting that the Plymouth County Commissioner has put together with people throughout the, throughout the county. I think the Town Administrator attended a similar meeting the day before, and I think everyone was invited. They brought up a lot of things, but there were a couple of things that they brought up that might be worth looking into, I thought, for the town. One was a pond management policy that they're thinking about putting together. Relatively inexpensive, it might work out for us. Another was, I think they're talking about an energy aggregation program, that they could get everyone throughout their county together to buy energy. And I know we do that now as a town, but if we did that as a county, that might save us some money, I don't know. But again, it might be something worth looking into. So I just wanted to mention those two things.
Thank you. I would just echo my thoughts on the congratulations to the new fire recruits, and especially to the Chief and his team. I know Everett Jermaine played a key role in that whole process, and they have a great methodology to bring in on the right people for the Fire Department. I'd also like to congratulate town meeting members on a successful town meeting. It went one night, and we got through it. So that's all I have.
It is true.
Yes.
It's the most important meeting of the year, right?
Yes, I think we all concur.
We certainly do.
Would anyone like to make a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Great, we're adjourned. Good night, everyone.
Good night.